Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the June 7th Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session at six o'clock to discuss some personnel and contract issues. And we recessed at 6:30 in order to attend a reception for our tenure candidates. And I think I'll take this time to recognize, we'll recognize the tenure candidates when they come up on the agenda, but Ryan, this was the one who was playing, alternating between the piano and the viola as background entertainment and did a wonderful job and really appreciated his efforts.
Thanks.[42.32][42.32](APPLAUSE).
Of course, I'm not sure he'll watch the Board of Education meetings so that he can see that, but certainly did a great job. For all you participation in government students that waited to the last possible time to attend a meeting.[62.12][62.12](LAUGHTER).
Sorry.
There are sheets for you to sign at the end of the meeting and I think you probably have to stay to the end of the meeting. Now, we usually let you leave at nine, whichever comes, whichever is first. If the meeting ends before nine, you can come up here and sign in or sign out. And if it continues beyond nine o'clock, we'll take a break and then you can sign out then. So, welcome to the meeting too. All right, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment for introductions around the table.
Dave Hurst.
Charmaine Weedsinger.
Michael Cooper.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kegel.
Matt Downey could not be here tonight. He's out of town, but he'll be here at the next meeting. I need a, I think this is just as good a spot to do this, I need a motion to amend the agenda to put number 11 under personnel, the appointment of Nicole Conway as the hall monitor, as the hall principal.
And the superintendent.
Under the superintendent's report. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. All right, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June, of the May 17th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Student Senate report, is there a member of the student senate here tonight that would like to report to the board? Come on up to the microphone. Now that you say it. He may not have a report, I think he's just a member of the senate. Okay, use the microphone, identify yourself and report on the student senate activities.
I'm Matt Sweeney and I'm a senior in student senate and right now we are pushing for the addition of Chromebooks for all students next year and that's about it.
Can I ask you, are there elections going on right now?
The elections are all over, they're actually, the winners were announced today via Twitter.
So, in case I don't do Twitter, who won? Who's the president? I mean, who's the, you know?
Um, I think.
Not to put you on the spot, it's okay.
For senior year, we'll narrow it down, do you know the senior?
Who's the incoming president?
Um.
It's okay.
Too much pressure.
I'm not, I didn't really pay close attention to election considering senior.
Cause you're leaving, you're out of here. Awesome.
He's a senior, we have to cut him some slack.
We're giving you a break, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Monroe, superintendent's report.
Okay, I have a few announcements before we recognize our tenure recipients. Today, we learned that we've been rated number one among 83 school districts in the Capital Region for, from the Buffalo Business First. That publication ranks all upscale school districts by region based on the last four years of test scores and graduation rates. I'd like to thank our staff, students, parents, community, and Board of Education for all their support in our programs to help us continue to be recognized. Hamagrella Elementary, they were, they retained the trophy for the most riders to school in the Albany Bike to School Challenge in 2017 for two years in a row. Hamagrella documented 225 kids riding, which landed them at the top for all schools and even Mr. K rode to school that day, so congratulations again. One of our teachers at Elsmere, Missy Waller, she's a faculty member, had won, she's won a $500 Making a Difference Award for educators from Capcom. That money is used to help pay for classroom programs. Our science bowl team scores top win at the Nationals. The high school science bowl team recently was held in Washington DC. The team finished among the top 16 in the US and won a $1,000 prize for the high school science program. The science bowl team includes Roger Howe, Bowen Chen, Samantha Marundi, Elliot Scheckman, and Denali Relas. The team was accompanied by Paul O'Reilly, so congratulations to them, they do a great job every year. The sales total at the close of business today for our lunch program, for once in history exceeded $1 million. And I want to thank all of the staff in the lunch program and Alisa Isner, the director, who has really worked hard to help promote the school lunch program and even the breakfast program to get us to that level. I think we all have seen years where we were not even close to that, so congratulations to all of them. Do you want to do the organizational meeting during the board reports? Did it change the July date?
No, we can do it now.
Okay. So, there was a request to, we have currently our organizational meeting scheduled for July 11th and could we move it to either the 10th or the 12th? Does anyone have a preference?
The 10th would be a Tuesday? No, the 11th right now is a Tuesday.
This would be Monday or Wednesday.
I suggest moving it to Wednesday, which is a normal meeting night for the board, to the 12th.
I think Wednesday would be a good.
It's when we typically meet, so. Is that good with everyone?
Sure. So, the new date is July 12th?
12th will be the new date for the organizational meeting.
Jody, could I just ask about the lunch, the food program? I'm assuming because you announced the number that that was a profitable number.
Yes, yes. The school lunch program is supposed, we actually will have a presentation on that at the next meeting. That's supposed to be a self-funding program, so whatever we make is supposed to support the entire program. Over the last several years, the, we have had to support the program through the general fund, so this is great news that we've met that mark.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, I'd like to recognize our tenure recipients. So, we have three individuals who are up for tenure this year. Len Keys, our athletic director, could not be here this evening, but I certainly want to recognize his accomplishment. I'd like to recognize Alicia Sharp. Alicia, do you want to come up?[521.12][521.12](APPLAUSE). So, Alicia's receiving tenure in the English tenure area. She has been a great find for our district. She's done a tremendous job with many of our programs. I've had the privilege of observing her several times and every time I'm in there, I think, wow, I wish all my English teachers when I was younger had her energy. So, she's just a great addition to the high school staff, so congratulations, Alicia.[551.12][551.12](APPLAUSE). The next individual I'd like to recognize is Nicole Kerber. Nicole, do you want to come on up?[568.12][568.12](APPLAUSE). So, Nicole is getting tenure in foreign language. She teaches Spanish at our middle school. Again, I've had the pleasure to observe her several times and even though I took Spanish years ago, I still need a little refresher now and then. Again, very energetic, great with the kids, and a real pleasure to have on our staff, so congratulations, Nicole.[592.12][592.12](APPLAUSE). And we do have one other appointment I just wanted to recognize, so she can get back to Boston area. Nicole Conway, Lynn asked to amend the agenda to, for her appointment in the superintendent's report, so I just want to, maybe Nicole, if you want to just stand up. She is a former BC alum from, what year, 90? 98. And she will be joining BC next year as the hall, high school hall principal, so I'd like to welcome her and congratulate her.[626.12][626.12](APPLAUSE). So, that's my superintendent's report?
Okay, board reports, anybody have anything to? Do we have to take action on that?
Yeah.
I think we should take action on that. Sorry about that. Actually, we probably should have done it before we congratulated them, but. Okay, can I have a motion to approve our two tenure candidates and Nicole Conway is the hall principal?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, board reports?
I do.
Sure.
I had the pleasure and privilege of going to something called Green Eggs and Hamilton. It was one of Mr. Rowwich's plays. He's been doing these plays for over 20 years now. And every one of them is, it gives the first graders a chance to get up on stage and these kids were just dynamic and wonderful and articulate. And it was really an affirmation of how good our teachers are in getting this much out of their students. It's something I think we sometimes forget is that children learn through play. And while this was a play, and I don't mean a play on words, but sometimes I think with all the data-driven things that we do, the testing, we sometimes forget that kids learn a lot from play. And what these kids learnt about history and were able to give back, even afterwards, when I was able to talk to some of them, they really had a passion and a knowledge for what they had learned by doing this play. And I think it's the kind of things that we, as a board and a district, should continue to support.
That's great.
Well, on plays, this weekend is BJ Cat in room D122, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and it's going to be Fractured Shakespeare. The students have been working hard on it, so if there is any interest in Fractured Shakespeare, it's going to be a good show. And then tomorrow night is the Spectrum, and that's always a spectacular event and anybody can go. And it's all of our musical ensembles, they start at the beginning and go right through the end with no breaks, and I encourage everybody to go.
And I was able to attend the track sectional meet for boys and girls track athletes. It was a great competition. I believe our athletes did all, competed well and with the highest level of sports, man and woman ship.
I just wanted to highlight an event last week, the after-school group, the Students for Peace and Survival, had an event, I was invited to participate, it was a panel discussion, and the theme was women in government. So, I was there as not just a school board member, but Albany County legislator, and there were other folks who were invited, other women leaders who work on behalf of other kind of advocacy organizations, Citizen Action, Planned Parenthood, and League of Women Voters. One of the most impressive parts of it was not just the excellent leadership of the student advisors who really commanded the room and the agenda and the questions of myself and the other panelists, but we were in this room and the room was filled with students despite being opposite the dodgeball tournament, which apparently was taking place outside. So, I thought it was quite impressive that we maintained a really big crowd of folks. And I just have to say, just a wonderful testimony to not just the fact that we have these great clubs, and I know there are numerous clubs, and this particular club had done a whole series of speaker invitations, so I think our presentation was kind of the end of what had been a year-long invitation where they had invited pretty, pretty big leaders in. Teacher, our Zephyr teachout, former gubernatorial candidate, former congressional candidate, as well as other very high-profile individuals, so pretty impressive. And also, just the maturity of the kids in the room, you could tell these were serious students who, you know, are taking advantage of lots of opportunities here at Bethlehem and really participating in something quite meaningful. And Mr. Klugman was there, as well as other, Jody, you were there, other folks, really impressive and great job by the, that club and really all the clubs that model that type of thing. Also, just wanted to say congratulations to the tenured folks. Len wasn't here, Len Keys, but he's been a real asset to the district and glad to recognize him as well. And just for anybody who has not been to the Spectrum concert, anybody in the audience, Ron, don't walk to the high school on Thursday night at 7:30. It is one of the best concerts you will see, bar none. If they, if they showcase that event at Tanglewood, you'd be happy to, you know, pay for your ticket on Ticketmaster. It is truly showcasing some exceptional musical talent here in the district. It is something I look forward to every single year, 7:30, make time for it. If you don't have kids in the program, still come, it is really, really impressive.
It's a different type of concert because they move, there's no, there are no introductions, they just move from group to group to group around the room and it just, it really is spectacular.
It's amazing.
It's amazing. Amazing the talent we have.
It is, it is.
I'm just going to mention a mental health summit that I attended at least part of. It's kind of recognized around the state that there are issues in our schools concerning children's mental health. And it was actually highlighted in a letter that we received from some students that had done a project in their health class and looking, you know, looking to advocate for more mental health work being done at the elementary level, you know, before kids get to middle school or high school. And this is exactly what was being talked about there and what some schools are doing and it was very interesting and, you know, I commend the students for, you know, doing that topic and, and the fact that, in a sense, we've responded because that's why we added the elementary counselors. So, we have one in each, each of our elementary buildings, which will be really helpful and hopefully recognize problems with students before they get too serious. So, just wanted to mention that. And also, just, it's getting to the end of the legislative session, I'll just mention there are times in the last week, the last day of the session is the 21st, and a lot of times, things happen during the last week or so that things arrive, are on agendas down at the Capitol that nobody knew was, knew were going to appear and sometimes they're not necessarily good, you know, for education in our case. So, be watchful and if advocacy alerts come out, please respond to them because I know they are, you know, Senator Breslin and Assemblywoman Faye do, do pay attention to what they receive, so helpful to do that.
The Policy Committee met recently and we have some policies on first read tonight. One of the policies that we were looking at was the drone policy. As you know, we had a request from the photography program to purchase some drones for use in the photography program. So, we had gotten some sample policies and regulations on drones and we asked our attorneys to give us some guidance and you got the materials on Friday to review. The policies and the guidance they gave us are fairly broad in terms of the guidance and in terms of the usage for the drones. And so, the committee thought it would be good to have the entire board give us more guidance on how restrictive we want to consider the drone policy before we have more discussion about this policy to guide the Policy Committee. When we had the discussion previously, we were just talking about the drones that we were purchasing for this photography program. But then we've also had discussions about, there may be cases where some companies that we are doing business with, such as architecture firms, may need to use drones for their work and may need, so we would need to include that in the policy. So, we need some guidance from the board on how wide the latitude should be in the policy before we start structuring this policy. Because as you saw, the, the one that was crafted sort of said, basically, anybody could come to the board or to the superintendent and ask to use a drone on school property, which I personally think is not advisable, but that's the way it was crafted in this draft policy. So, I, we're asking you for some guidance before we continue working on this policy.
Do you want that feedback now or when we discuss, because I know they're part of the administrate, the other actions, do you want that now or? First reading.
Well, this isn't, this, this, this isn't for first reading.
No, I know, but I'm just saying since we're discussing, it's, it's, the policy is listed at the, towards the end of the agenda, if that's the better time, I don't know, we have, I guess it's totally up to you.
No, no. No, it's fine.
So, I have a question about that. So, the question about how broad, but even if we crafted a policy that allows for the use of drones by a wider audience, it would still always rest under the board's jurisdiction as far as the board agreeing to allow that? So, in other words, if we crafted a policy that essentially says anyone can come and petition the board for, you know, to use a drone for XYZ purpose, the board would always have the discretion and the authority to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Well, I think they would probably go to the superintendent.
Okay.
They wouldn't petition.
But I worry more about.
But more liability, I think, is the issue.
Yeah, Judy did follow up with our insurance, you had asked about to check on the insurance.
Yeah, a lot of insurance questions I had because if it's unauthorized use of a drone on our property, what's, what's our liability?
Right.
It would be an exclusion under our policy, but are they going to indemnify us?
So, I checked with our carrier on that and if there were to be unauthorized use on district property and there was some form of damage either to property or to a person, because that is unauthorized use, the person who would be liable would be the person who was operating the drone. So, their insurance coverage would be responsible for covering that damage. In the event they had inadequate insurance or did not have insurance and the person that was hurt then tried to sue the school district, our coverage would serve as our first defense, so the attorneys would defend the district and in that case, you said there is no obligation, they would ask for a summary dismissal of that action.
But if they found any liability on us.
Because there's nothing negligent that we had done.
They would indemnify us. So, if they found 1% and they said, you're 1%, you didn't have a sign posted, you didn't say, "No drones on our property."
If we have this policy then, that would prohibit that, we would obviously post it. If they were using it without permission, we would not be liable.
And then the other question I had was on the umbrella policy, do we have to have a primary liability policy in order for it to activate?
We have a, no, we do not. So, our existing liability policy and our umbrella would cover that. Our umbrella is up to $10 million per occurrence and in the aggregate.
And then we have talked about schools coming on our property and not knowing that they're using drones, like sporting events, they may have a drone that they bring with them.
Well, I think, you know, that signage is important, just like we have for certain, you know, for, you know, other items that we don't want.
Yeah, don't we have that liability anyway? People can come on the property and do all kinds of stuff that we don't authorize.
Yeah, they likened it to hitting a bucket of golf balls.
Right.
But right now, we don't use drones, so I think once we start using drones, then we're more aware of the fact that people are coming on and maybe using them and.
It's privacy issue too, because we, in order to use like student pictures, we need parents' permission.
Permission.
And here, you know, someone could be taking pictures without any permission. Actually, given the concerns that our attorneys raised in the memo, I am not in favor of having drones on the whole campus at this point. In terms of privacy and liability and damage and how much the teachers can assist and who, student control of the drones for a photography class, I, or for purposes right now, I don't believe, according to our attorneys, there's another school district that has them. According to their memo, I'm not in favor of them at this time. I don't think we need to take this on.
I, I would disagree. I, I think that there are valid reasons for using them, both in terms of educational and, you know, if for companies, it certainly simplifies their work if, if they need to get overhead shots of something to be able to use a drone to, to do that. My recommendation is that initially, we craft a fairly restrictive policy, restricting it, say, to the drones that we're using for the photography class.
That we use, that we own.
And companies that do work directly for us. Keep that policy in effect for a year or two, see how it goes, and then we could always revisit that policy and consider expanding it out if, if everything goes well. But I would rather, you know, keep it fairly tight initially and then consider loosening the policy later on. But I think there are valid reasons and I think, you know, this is, you know, we're always saying, you know, we want to be forward-looking. This is something that, that is the, the new thing and, and there are valid reasons for using them.
Right, and the STEAM Committee had looked at instruction in how to use drones, right? I mean, there was some discussion, I'm not sure how far we've gotten there, but I think there are places that, you know, maybe they would be part of the program to use. So, I would say having a restrictive policy makes sense and then we can amend it in the future when, you know, when conditions change, just like any other policy.
I would agree to go to a more restrictive policy, but I'd want it quite restrictive. And the other concern I had, and this may throw a monkey wrench in it, is if I remember right, when they, in what the lawyers said in their piece, was that in order to fly it, I think it was with or without license, I forget, but the teachers could assist but not teach how to fly the drone. And then there was another option where they could actually teach, but I think then they had to be licensed.
Right, there's a, we would have at least two of our staff go through the training to get certified to be licensed and students who are in the class would be deemed hobbyist, right? That's a term they use, hobbyist. So, they're not, they don't have the same kind of training, so it technically would be under the direction of the teachers who are supervising.
And they would be fully trained and certified?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So, Dave, I wanted to get your opinion on it as Assistant Superintendent, what's your thought on the, the use of drones in the photography class?
Well, it's certainly a specialized field in photography now. I think most photographers are now, that's one of the key components of what they advertise is that they do have the ability to do drone photography. And working with, as Lynn mentioned, companies with the STEAM Committee, we've already had companies express an interest in allowing us to come to their business and work with, they have teams that that's all they do is drone photography, to see how it's utilized in the field. It's, you know, certainly an up-and-coming skill that students are going to need if they want to pursue something in that, in the photography realm. And again, if you look at, you know, it's just starting to make an impact, you know, we might be one of the first high schools to do it, but colleges are certainly starting to extend this program out and if we can get students exposure to it before they move on to college, I see a, you know, it's a huge benefit to them.
Okay, thank you. Would we need two separate policies though for possibly permissive, asking for permissive use to bring it on property?
So, yeah, we would probably do something with, either something in relation to our contractors we work with or if we're not going to, going to open it up to and outside, we don't need to worry about the use of the building forms.
we don't need to worry about the use of the building forms or use of facilities forms.
Right, right.
But, yeah, we would probably want to differentiate that.
Start asking vendors, are, do you use drones? Is that part of the?
Well, and for instance, it would be an application to use the drone. So part of the administrative act would be to review it, make sure they had the proper training, proper licensure, proper insurance in place. So if it was an outside vendor, we would want them to issue us a certificate of insurance where we were named as an additional insured, so.
So is that something going forward, we would be asking when they could, so we have construction coming up?
Right.
So do we ask them when they come on our property? Do you use drones? Like, how is that?
We currently don't, but if we want to build that into the policy for outside vendors, we would, we would begin to do that.
But they might not know to ask. So I'm just wondering if.
Well, they have to all, they have to, their contracts all go through us with Greg or Judy reviewing it or myself, so I think that.
It's going to be part of the contract.
Right.
I guess that's the question. So we're going to have wording in there, do you use drones as part of the contract?
Well, it'll be part of a conversation that we would have with them. Hey, be advised, the district has just recently adopted a new policy. Here are the requirements. So if you are planning to use them, know that a preapproval is required and then ask them.
I can't imagine that people are going to be flying drones around without kind of checking in with us.
Yeah.
Even if it's a construction company.
Jonathan, what do you think?
I can imagine people coming in. I mean, look, they know we don't want them walking their dogs and, and leaving stuff on our fields and it's dumb.
No, no, I'm not talking about those people. I'm saying people we do business with are certainly tuned into, you know, their own liability to doing anything outside the parameters of.
Well, it might be don't ask, don't tell if they are afraid we may say no.
I think Mike's recommendation is good and I also think we have a really good photography program and it makes perfect sense that we would want to enhance it through the use of drone photography.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just want to make sure we have, if we're going to open those doors, we're just covering all areas. So are we going to ask sporting teams if they, when they come, do they use drones or?
Well, and I wonder if the other, there's different sizes of drones, there's different classes of drones. So could we look at limiting something that really is more like a, you know, a model helicopter kind of a thing?
Yeah.
That would be less likely to cause damage versus the types of drones that we're talking about potentially for the program?
Right.
So we could differentiate.
I know, great to. How do we do aerial photography now? Because I know we've seen for the bonds, how do they do them?
Oh, maybe strums.
You use drones.
Without a policy in place?
What? He uses drones without asking.
We should probably talk about this for 20 more minutes because we already use drones.
So I'm sorry, did you say the company?
Yes.
Who called it?
They only have one, our site contractor.
Right. But you knew about it.
Yes.
No one else figured to ask?
Well, they knew about it. They, they asked me a mission.
Expert in the room.
All right, I think, I think, I think you have guidance. I think we know where we're going, you know, somewhat a restrictive policy, but include, you know, for the educational program photography than for outside vendors.
And I would ask that you use the attorney's opinions as additional guidance. They do raise a number of concerns.
Yes. And we did ask a lot of questions in the policy meeting and we did present Judy with a lot of questions to go back and ask.
A lot of questions.
It wasn't taken lightly.
No, I wasn't implying that it was. I'm just saying that this provides additional guidance and I would encourage you to continue to use it.
Okay. I hope that was helpful.
It was.
No, that was good. Especially finding out that we're already using.
We now have a bread box, not a barn.
So we're all in agreement, we're going to, well, right, majority seems that we're good with the drone use.
That's why it's a policy. Okay, moving on to our, our special report tonight, our presentation. You were doing it?
Well, I'm going to start.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for being here tonight. We wanted to continue the conversation we began a few months ago. As you know, in the fall, the sheriff's office approached us with an interest in purchasing Clarksville. At that time, we were waiting for some demographic information from the Capital Region Planning Commission, as well as some information from the town. And then in March, we did a community forum to discuss some plans or consideration for that and talked about some of the enrollment numbers, some of the buildings, building proposals in town to present to the board for consideration. So we do have several members of the sheriff's department here. They're in the back this evening, but they're able to certainly answer any questions. So since that March meeting, we have been working with the sheriff's office on different options to, for the board to consider. And what you're going to hear tonight is essentially a lease purchase agreement that Judy will go over more of the details shortly. At the March 8th meeting, we talked about, the general consensus was that people didn't want to see the building empty, that they wanted to see the school in operation. We again discussed some of the future enrollment projections. We also talked about some of the concerns about the long bus rides, particularly for our primary students. During the budget process, the board did authorize some additional bus routes to hopefully next year alleviate that bus ride time from 60 minutes down to 45 minutes for elementary So since then, we've, we, as I said, we've had several meetings with the sheriff's office. We've discussed with our attorneys, they've discussed with their attorneys, a potential plan to transfer ownership. So tonight, as I said, you're going to hear the specifics of that proposal. And then any questions you might have or follow up you may want regarding that, we can follow up with at the next meeting on the 21st. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Judy to get into some of the specifics of the agreement.
So as you know, we have been leasing Clarksville to the sheriffs for the last five years. And as part of that lease agreement, we do have the ability to extend that lease. So in our discussions, we talked about what we would need to change going forward if we were to accomplish this as ultimately as a sale. And one of the biggest clauses that was problematic to the sheriff's office was that the term that they would have to restore the property to its pre-rental condition. So as they were trying to set up the space so that it would be most efficiently organized for their uses, it was very important to them to have that clause removed from the lease. So the proposed lease purchase agreement that we have, that was posted up on our website, does remove that clause. So it would allow modifications to occur without the need to undo those renovations.
Can I, can I just say about, something about that? Matt Downey and I did tour the building with the custodian. I'm not sure if another board member went with us, but, and they have, because of the different functions that take place in that building now, there, I could see why they would want that, not to have to remove everything that they put up in terms of the use of the building and the different offices.
Yes.
So we did see what the, how the building is currently being used.
Thank you. Some of the other terms of the lease would be that the classrooms that the district is currently using for storage, we would need to clear those items from the classrooms so that the sheriffs could have full use of that. The sheriff also offered to make a room available to the district for future use so that if we wanted to make, for instance, a Wi-Fi access point available to students, potentially for homework or things like that, home instruction potentially could occur there, or we could use it as a tutoring site as well. So they agreed to providing that space to the district at no cost in the future. And then one of the most important clauses that we had talked about is, in the event at some point down the road, the sheriff's office decides that they've grown too large or that they need to relocate at that point, they would need to offer the building back to the district, essentially a right of first refusal for us to take the building back if we needed at that time to reopen it and use it as a school. The financial terms of the lease purchase essentially extends the current lease at the current annual terms, where we are paying, where the sheriff is paying us $54,000 this year, that goes up $6,000 a year. So for the next three years, we would receive the regularly scheduled lease payments of $60,000, $66,000, and $72,000 in the third year, for a total of $198,000. And at that point, after the three-year period, when all of that money had been paid to the district, then the title would transfer and there would be a closing at that point. Beyond the lease term, though, there would be an arrangement for the in-kind patrol services to continue for a five-year period. And that we've had in place throughout this original lease, where when we need supplemental surveillance in the period of end of May through the end of the school year, the sheriff's office provides a two-person patrol for us in the evening hours, from about 11 o'clock at night through to the morning. So the value of that for the five-year period would be $127,000. So the total consideration would be $325,000 under this proposed lease purchase. While the property was appraised at $411,000 and change, we recognize that, given the sheriff's intention or his notification to us that if he was not able to purchase it, they would need to find other space, our lease would essentially be ending now. Identifying that based on our enrollment numbers, we would not have the need to use it as an elementary school. Were we to then list that with a Realtor or, you know, try to find another tenant, there would be likely a 33-month period. The appraisal report had noted it could be somewhere between two to three years before we would be able to find a suitable buyer for that property. So with the costs that the district would be incurring, just on maintenance costs alone for a vacant building, at about $31,000 per year, we had reduced that valuation down to the $325,000 as consideration. There are still bonds outstanding on the building for the work that was done in 2003, just under $1.7 million as of the end of this fiscal year. And based on the established repayment schedule, that would come to an end in June of 2022. So those sales proceeds of the $325,000 would not be unrestricted. In fact, they would have to go into, similar to what we used when we had sold 90 Adams, it goes into what's called a mandatory reserve. And those monies would need to be used to offset the future payments through the five years remaining on those bonds. Now, the state aid would continue to flow to the district, but what happens is they create an offset to the amount of aid that they give us that's equal to the amount of money that we get from the sheriffs as part of the sale. What that looks like, this chart shows you what our annual debt service is going through 2022. That's both principal and interest. Our scheduled building aid currently is what's listed in the second column, and that's at just under $1.3 million. So regardless of whether we're leasing the building, we sell the building, or we hold the building, the local share, while those bonds are still outstanding, would be the $625,000. The bottom line to the district's financial position is neutral because whatever comes in from the sheriff is the offset in the building aid. It still does not change that net local share over the coming five-year period. In terms of the items that are contained or retained on the site, the peace pole is something that would remain on the property. It could be in the front, it could possibly be moved to the back, but that would stay on-site. It's a wooden structure, it is outside in the elements, so, you know, they'll take care of it while it's there for the rest of its life. The building sign would remain there, noting it as Clarksville Elementary, as would the bronze plaque that commemorates the use of the building as a school. And any of the artwork would be digitally preserved. And I know the sheriff had indicated that they would be retaining the Clifford mural that's down the hall. And in fact, they would put a protective covering over that and essentially frame it in so that that would be available.
So everything else, when you say artwork, you would take, you were talking about?
We'd take pictures of them that you could then reproduce.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. So the main benefits of the transfer are certainty for the district, certainty for the sheriff's office. We know that we have a willing buyer and it would, for us, eliminate that uncertainty of a future vacant building and what the costs would be for us to maintain that. The holding costs of about $31,000 per year are only a portion of the costs that we would incur. We could also potentially have to do work to maintain the roof or other, you know, building envelope matters. There was quite a bit of future work that was identified on the five-year review from the architects. So those costs, if we owned it, still would be incurred at some point in the future. Certainly maintaining the presence of the sheriffs at the building. I think some of the comments that we had heard the last time is that they are a good neighbor and they are able to quickly respond to any calls for service, be it need for sheriffs or emergency medical assistance. And it is an example, too, of working cooperatively with our fellow municipal entities. I know that's something that is desired. Typically, we try to find things that we can do, working cooperatively with the town, other school districts, and, and the county in this case. The sheriff had also indicated that he would continue to use that building as an emergency shelter for the community. The playground would be maintained and potentially enhanced. The building's use for space, for activities from some community groups would continue. And then potentially in the future, there could be additional services that might be housed in that building as well as determined by the county. So if the proposed terms of this lease agreement are acceptable, the board would need to take action to approve that. And the resolution that the board would have to adopt would include a declaration that the district does not anticipate any future need for the building as an elementary school. It would need to determine that that sales price of $325,000 is determined to be reasonable. And then there is no requirement for a referendum on that. That's something where if a petition was presented to the board, then a referendum would be required. The county also has to have legislative approval. The Public Safety Committee would be reviewing the agreement. So essentially, it would require approval by both the school board and by the Albany County Legislature.
Can I ask you a question? How many? Can I ask you a question? How many signatures are needed for the referendum? Do you know?
It's over eleven hundred.
Okay, thank you.
It's a percentage of the eligible voters within the district. So, that is the overview of the terms of the proposed lease purchase agreement. And if there are any questions from the board?
Judy, if you could just go back to, I think it's eight. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just want to be clear. It says the in-kind patrol services, it says five more years, but it's five more years from now, not five more years from when the payments stop.
Correct. It would be the first three years when the lease payments are occurring, plus two additional years beyond that. Yes.
Thank you.
Because the current lease is ending, is that correct?
Correct. July thirty-first, the current lease expires.
We only had one appraisal completed on the building, correct?
Correct.
The sheriff had one as well before us, right?
Yeah.
And their appraisal was similar to ours?
Yes.
I guess my concern is we truly don't know the value of the building. I mean, if we put it on the market for a year, it may or may not sell. It may sell higher than that, it may sell lower than that. I guess I'm stuck on just the purchase price, and it just seems potentially low to me. I'm not a real estate agent, but we've never attempted to try to sell the building. So, that would be my first concern. And then, my second concern is just, and I'll go to Dave on this one. Is there any potential, as a district, that we would want to utilize that building for programming in the future? Like, we talk about how Bosse's can't accommodate some of our students because they don't have the room or the timing to get them back and forth to school for some programs. Is there any possibility that we would ever need that space for instructional purposes or new technology? Because the cost to maintain it, in the scheme of our budget, isn't that high? So, I just want to make sure that, with a vision of where we're going as a district, that we couldn't potentially use that building.
Not based on current enrollment trends or our current programs?
We couldn't. The issue with trying to do something with technology is that building's not, doesn't have the
Technology upgrades.
Capacity that all of our other buildings do.
No, I'm talking about renovating. I mean, if we needed to use it for future instructional purposes, where we wanted to make, I don't know how big the building is, a certain classroom size where we could accommodate a large number of students, and it would be maybe a technologically advanced program that we couldn't put in this building because we just don't have the space.
But it would require a huge investment for a technological upgrade.
I know, but I'm thinking like, all right, well, we're renovating our auditorium, and we just pass a bond for that. Is there potential for that? I mean, I don't see that that would be unreasonable, that we may need that space at some point for instructional purposes.
Are you saying regardless of enrollment numbers?
Regardless of enrollment.
It's more curriculum.
Right, you're talking like a vision.
A vision.
The vision of the district, in five years, are we going to be saying, geez, too bad we didn't have Clarksville because now we're looking for space to build out an alternative to both? I mean, I'm just making it up, but whatever. That's the question you're asking.
Yeah, and I could see that. I don't think we have, we have a vision, but we don't have like a five-year, this is what we want to do with our programming, and maybe this is something advanced that we could do that we may need the building for. And I would hate to see us sell that space and then need it down the road, that's all. Because there are things that we could probably do with it.
Well, I think we do have a vision of where we want to go as a district.
But we might not have the total.
I mean, I guess where I come from is if we see any potential that we would need that for something, I get that argument. But I also think that we have a buyer right now on our doorstep that's going to go away if we don't negotiate some sort of lease purchase type of arrangement. I would feel, if we didn't know right now what we were going to do with that, we may miss an opportunity to exercise our fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of our district not to take advantage of an offer. You know, it's really hard to say, well, we want to keep it around because, and remember, we're going to have maintenance costs and we're going to have to have upkeep on a building that, I'm not sure there's a big market out there that are looking, beside the sheriff's office, that are looking for an old school to, you know, do stuff with. So, it just seems like the cards have kind of lined up. If we contemplated, and we've talked about the enrollment projections, it's really hard to make a determination without some sort of data fueling it. The data is there. Is it perfect? No. But it's still data that we are making a decision on. So, I would hate to see us miss an opportunity when we could be stuck with a liability here that is a big problem in my mind.
I remember just with Ninety Adams Place, I mean, we thought, here it is in the center of town, but, you know, that, and it was praised very high, but we had to come way down on it, it didn't work out. And that really kind of surprised myself and others who were here.
Part of that was the zoning issue, that you had to have it rezoned, wasn't it? That the cost of rezoning was a factor.
Well, one group that wanted it, needed to be rezoned.
Yeah, and they didn't get permission.
Right, but.
The preschools.
Schools out. Preschool, schools out.
The schools out.
With all due respect to.
And one of the issues with Clarksville is the historic designation that limits
Right, that's true.
What buyers can do with the building. So, to me, it makes it very difficult for us to justify having an empty building sitting there for five years, under the presumption that, well, maybe, possibly, we might have a use, there might be a scintilla of a possibility. We, you know, it's.
I just don't think we'd had that, you know, I'm not in the administration, but I don't know if you guys ever have sat down and said, is there a potential that we could use this building for instructional, with it being six miles down the road? I don't know if that conversation has happened, so I guess I'm asking that question.
Or even if it's not, you know, do you foresee, it's a matter of what can we do with it? I mean, part of my concern here is I sort of feel like I'm being brought to a wedding with a shotgun. With all due respect to the gentleman.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. But, you know, it feels like a shotgun wedding. I feel like, you know, I'm being dragged, kicking and screaming to this, and I feel very uncomfortable with where we are now. I don't know the true value of the building. We've had two appraisals, which, you know, it's sort of like, appraisals can go, depending on who you talk to and what the conversation is before they make the appraisal. It's not like this is a mortgage where the appraiser's assigned to you. This is an appraiser that we picked, it's an appraiser they picked. And, you know, I don't know how accurate the numbers are. I have a concern still about the projections. I know we're never going to get perfect projections, but the projections that we used before I got on the board to build Elsmere, to build, I'm sorry, to build Eagle. And, you know, were numbers that, you know, turned out not to be accurate. And I'm just concerned that we are going down that road again. And I frankly would, I think it's a small amount to keep it, the building, for a while. I'd like to see the question asked, what can we use it for? Rather than, do we see, you know, what might we use it for, but what can we use it for?
From a curriculum instruction standpoint, we don't anticipate needing that building. We have space in all of our other buildings. We have more modern facilities that we would utilize, if that helps to answer that. Like, I can't imagine something that we haven't, like, we do think about different programs we're bringing. We talked about Cisco, we talked about some of the technology, the STEAM initiatives. Thinking we needed an alternate location for any of those is not something I anticipate.
Plus, you'd have to ask people.
Well, you would.
Right, right. I have a question. Before the sheriff moved in, how long was the building vacant? I'm trying to get the exact timeline.
A year.
It was vacant for a year, and we were not advertising it as a rental property, or were we?
At that time, no.
No, so the building was just plain empty, and the sheriff approached the district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's how that relationship began?
I guess one of the things I had said, too, I think it was one of the times I didn't meet the candidate at night, but we were talking about lecture-style classrooms. I remember that topic came up, and that we did not have a room in this building big enough for a lecture-style classroom. And it did come up as a conversation that maybe we would want to go to a larger, you know, maybe there might be something.
No, we have, we do have some rooms that can open up into lecture style, but that's one of the, D-122 is going to be one of those rooms that we renovate for that.
And if I could add a comment on the appraisals that had occurred? I mean, these were done by licensed professionals who are very familiar with the commercial real estate market. And as to forming those values, they looked at comparables. And there are a number of other districts in the recent past few years who have been trying to sell elementary schools that were no longer in use. And that's where those estimates came, for how long it would be sitting on the market. And a number of those comparables started out asking for a very high number. And as the months went by, the years went by, that value came down. When those buildings ultimately sold, it was for the square footage valuation that is part of the appraisal that we had. And the buildings, when they sold, were typically used for housing units. That's what they were converted to, so.
Mike made another comment about the historic designation. What are the restrictions? I mean, if the sheriff's buying it, they have, they're going to be making modifications. So, what are the limiting modifications? I don't understand the, what the restrictions are.
The appraisal had noted that because of that designation, it could be perceived as an obstacle to making modifications to that building. So, you know, depending on the nature of the renovations, there might be some review and approvals that would need to go through the Office of Historic Preservation at the state level. It might not be applicable. A lot of it seemed to be tied to whether there were any federal funds involved in the project, which is not the case here. But it was cited as something that could be a cause for concern. You know, it's like uncertain zoning.
Does that mean that if a developer bought it and decided just to take down the building and build a bunch of houses, that they would not be able to do that?
I do not think they would be prohibited from doing that.
Okay.
I think there would be great hue and cry, justifiably so, but I think legally, they could.
But there could be some issues if somebody wanted to
Right.
Convert it into, say, apartments or something.
Well, and that was one of the terms. I didn't put all of the terms within the lease in this proposal, but we talked with the county about that. And we said, this is important, that this building be as true to its current appearance as possible, at least on the exterior of the building. And they had agreed to maintain that for a ten-year period beyond the closing date. So, that's also a unique term for use by the sheriffs that I would not think we would get with any other potential purchaser.
What is the current water sewer situation at Clarksville?
There, they have one and not the other.
They don't have water.
Sewer, or water, no sewer. Okay. Yeah, they're on a subject. Okay.
You know, I've gone back and forth on this, and it's always playing the numbers and trying to project a moving snapshot. We don't know what the enrollment will be, however, we have trends. I wasn't on the board when Eagle was built. I don't know what the numbers were, I don't know the discussion of the board, so I can't comment on that. Personally, saying what was right and wrong, I was not on the board. And I know from eight years of experience, the board has a lot of discussion that I was not privy to. So, I'm always concerned that the building may have to be used in the future. However, I do know that the projections for kindergarten this year are, I won't say low, but we have, we have room. And even if we were to increase the number of students per grade, especially in K through five, I believe the average class size is like twenty-one to twenty-two, is that correct?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, and so, there is room in sections to add two to three students. I'm not sure if that's true across all elementary schools, but there is room to add to those grade levels. You know, obviously not infinitely, but there are a number of students that could be accommodated through existing space.
So, we have, right, we have capacity in all of the sections in the elementary, K-five would be except, we have those class cap guidelines. At this point, from our enrollment, there are, I think, one grade level at Hammergrill that's capped and one at Slingons, but that's, all the rest have capacity.
Are you talking about grade level or classrooms?
Classrooms.
So, a single classroom is capped, not the entire grade level?
And then, we have, at three of our buildings, we have, actually, Elsmere, probably next year, we have actual classrooms that are available. So, you have capacity in each of the sections, and there are classrooms still available.
That could accommodate, for example, twenty additional students.
Exactly.
And so, I'm concerned about that. However, I believe that the numbers tell us enough that that building, we could anticipate that building being empty if the sheriff were to move out. We would not be using that building in the foreseeable future for enrollment issues. And then, so the issue is, should we leave it vacant? Or should we accept a tenant who is by all means? I was at the community forum, most people said it's a good tenant, is taking care of the building, is working with the community. So, I'm more in favor of the lease purchase agreement, only because I don't want to see that building left empty. I don't want us to be looking for a tenant or buyer for five or ten years while the building sits there empty, perhaps being vandalized, perhaps not. I don't think the district would ever let it deteriorate. However, a building that's left empty for that amount of time in a market that we can't predict either, as much as we can predict enrollment, is a difficult vision. I, going historically, just want to add something, going really historically, probably maybe before somebody born, I'm not sure. But in the mid-seventies, when, and I wasn't on the board, wasn't privy to those conversations, but when the decision was made to close the Delmar School, because the baby boomer generation now had kind of worked its way through the elementary level, and the space was not needed. And so, the decision was made at that time to close the Delmar School, right in the middle of town. And it took, so you figure that's the mid-seventies. The enrollment didn't start really increasing till, you know, closer to nineteen ninety, late eighties, nineteen ninety, then early nineties it really started to. But that's where there was a lot of available building space in the town of Bethlehem, part of the school district. And a lot of that building at this point has, those developments have built out, for the most part. I think there's still a little bit of land, but not a lot of land for, you know, for development. So, I mean, it takes a while for that population to start to build up again. Then we peaked, what, in two thousand and five? And then, it has started to, then it started to increase again. So, I don't know how long it would take to get to that point, and whether we ever would get to that point again. Where is the, is that the town hall?
Yeah.
The other thing we don't know is where, if there's going to be some unanticipated spikes in development that are outside this, you know, the projections that we got. And a lot of them are in Glenmont. So, you know, you think about where the need might be. The need might be, you know, adding space to an existing Glenmont Elementary School, or someplace else. So, I mean, I'm sort of torn, but I'm kind of where Charmaine is. I hate the thought that we would, we would have an empty building just for this contingency purpose, that we don't know if it's ever going to be needed in the foreseeable, and, you know, we've used what data is available that's not perfect. But I just think that, you know, to me, that's the worst of all case scenario, where we say, well, we might want to have this because we might need it at some point in the future. And then, we lose, you know, what we have in front of us. And if the future point comes, we may not even be the smartest thing for whoever the board is at that point to, you know, reopen it for, you know, whatever reasons. So, I hate the thought that we, you know, we may be kind of putting that in motion, just for all these hypotheticals that we just for all these hypotheticals that we could quite honestly dream up all day. What if, what if, what if, and.
Another data point that should be looked at is, you know, the Census Bureau looks at family size. And whereas it used to be quite common to have, you know, three or four children in a family, increasingly they're finding that millennials are having one or two children per family. So they're having smaller families. And so that's a consideration as well.
But given the reputation of the district, people seem to want to move here. And I think that we would get more people moving in because of the reputation of the district, because people want their children educated at Bethlehem. I think that, that, that might just almost negate the fact that while we may have less family, families with fewer children, we have more families with one or two.
But what I'm saying is that, and as, 15 years ago, if a family moved in, they would move in with three or four children. Now they're going to move in with one or two children. So it's just less children coming into the school district.
Yeah, I agree with you, as a desirable, school district is a desirable school district. We moved here because of the school district 20 years ago. So, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know, in terms of the, the shifting demographics of New York State, period, is also influencing it. So if you, if you're going to move in the area, you may be looking for Bethlehem. I'm just not sure how many people are actually flocking to upstate New York.
All right. If we, if we, you said it was about 20 years that that cycle ran before. Let's assume 20 years from now, whoever is left on the board or whatever the new board is. Who, whatever, however that board is, is constituted, 20 years from now, if they need to, if they need more space or to build on, where can they build another school in town? I mean, is there space that, that another school could be built? Or do we have enough space on the various schools to add on? And quite frankly, 20 years from now, what condition are the schools going to be in? I know we maintain them, but there is a useful life for a school. And some of our schools are, you know, in excess of 50 years old.
Due to that wonderful maintenance, they will still be good for at least another 50 years.
No, but just, it's like 20 years ago, who knows which buildings we'll be using and how many, which buildings we may have built. We don't know.
Can we add on to what it's going to look like? We may be, we may have high schools that are, that are remote. We may have distance learning all over the place. I mean, you don't know, 25 years from now, you know, you look at lots of trends where you may see, you know, students doing work at their homes.
I, I did not hear your comments.
I had asked if you could add on to the existing
Elementary.
elementary schools, and, and I think that's usually where the, obviously the primary concern is. Lynn said that Elsmere, you couldn't.
It's a lot of capacity.
Elsmere.
Unless it went up higher. But it, it, it fills a lot of capacity, but I think all the other schools.
I didn't know was Glenmont's backyard was preserved or wetlands that you couldn't add on.
I think this room in Hammagrail.
Well, Hammagrail's one story, isn't it? So you can, Hammagrail's one story, so.
I mean, I certainly support, obviously, if we're going to sell it to somebody who's going to support the community, that makes the most sense. I just want to make sure that we don't see in the next five years that we need the building. I don't think student-wise, we're going to need the building. I absolutely don't believe that. But for other uses I could potentially see in my vision.
Do you have empty classrooms in this building? Do you happen to know roughly empty classrooms?
Not many up here at the high school. We have quite a few at, at the middle school.
Right.
Because that's where the enrollment trend is. I anticipate in the next couple of years, we'll have more space up here. Part, part of that is because we moved our offices and business office up here. So that's taken up quite a bit of space.
Well, I just know that because it, for budgetary purposes, I know we've gone from the middle school for all these different teams, to half teams, to no team.
That's why they have.
So that's an indication that at that level, there should be space available.
Yes.
I'd like to add, ask a different question. This would, I believe, of the sheriff. At one point and on one of the slides, there was an indication of additional support services. County services may move to this satellite location. Has there been a discussion with the county executive to determine if, in fact, they are willing to or considering or have made a decision to move services or not?
Please, please, Sheriff.
I haven't had that discussion with them, because it's just sort of the end stages of it. I fully support it, I vote for the legislature, the county executive, that's going to progress. I mean, we're still a few years away from even approaching that. So I haven't had a hard-nosed discussion with regard.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I just want to ask, did you, I'm sorry, Sheriff, I want to make sure I understood. You, you said you're a few years away before approaching the, the idea of additional support services.
Well, we would be a few years away with renovations and everything. Even to be able to have the space, because I would have to renovate half the building, swing all our people out to one side, either the front or the back, and then reverse it. So we're a few years away from it. So I, I didn't really, I don't think right now we have the time to sit down and, and talk about it.
Thank you. Would you agree that we can open this up to the audience?
Yeah.
For their comments? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on, on this presentation? Come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
I will try not to occupy too much of your time today.
You can, you can take it right out, maybe that's easier.
All right. Look, I love my school district, my family loves the school district. We, yes, Judy Abbott, sorry, I forgot to mention that. We're, we're committed members of our school community. And I want to say, we came here to raise our families. You know, people come to this school district to raise families or to educate our children in a good school district. I want to also thank you guys for sending out notifications to the district. I think that was a good move. However, I really was disappointed that you're still, and I hear you relying on these enrollment projection models. I grabbed the paper, the web, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But I really want to say, you know, I've seen this before. We did this, we did this whole thing before with building Eagle. We had enrollment projection models that we relied upon and promoted, and we were so sure that they were going to be right, even though at that time, we had a building moratorium in the town of Bethlehem. And the baseball team came and said, we're seeing a dip. I don't know if you've, in our, in our enrollment. So the model, the, the models were wrong then. And I'm really, really worried that your models are wrong now. There's building all over the town. I know you're talking about trying to accommodate them, Jody, but it just, your own report that you recited in your, in your notice, the capital, the commission planning report, I'm not even using these, actually said, you know, these enrollment models don't include all this development. And so that really gave you a word of caution. So when I read your public notice, I don't see any of that caution. And I don't, I only hear a little bit of the caution here. And that really worries me, because I really don't want to make that same mistake again and waste our taxpayer dollars, you know, including state aid. That's taxpayer dollars too. So, and I think that schooled, and that school was a lot of money. The new school was, I think it was, might have been, Eagle might have been $110, $111 million when you first built it.
No, but the whole bond was in there.
The whole bond was $93 million.
The second bond, it ended up being $112. The very next year, you added, you added another wing, the very next year, under the.
So we could have full-day kindergarten throughout the district.
And to bring the ELC is what everyone was told. They were going to be bringing the ELC to Eagle. But then we kept them in all the schools, which I'm fine with. But I just don't want to make that same mistake where we have a situation where your models are saying declining, declining, declining. But I look around me and there's building everywhere, all across the district. And so that report from December does talk about that. Please read the report, make sure you see it. And you know, Clarksville does sit on 12 and a half acres, and it's a historic building. You don't have any other school that sits on 12 and a half acres. I, I, what, the reason it was on the National Historic Registers list, just so you know, was because it was the first public school building in the nation to be built with, you know, handicapped accessibility and environmental considerations in mind. It was designed by Henry Blatner. I think that's something that, you know, is fabulous and wonderful. I want to talk about this enrollment model that we keep using to make big decisions. And I wish we wouldn't use these enrollment models to make big decisions. It was published in 1970 by Webster and, and it was based on a study of 25 school districts in Michigan. And, and the enrollment data was all from like 1964, 1965. And basically, it definitely doesn't include any development. It just basically takes past ratios of, you know, growth or decline and applies it to the future. So the paper says, the basic tenet of the model is that past enrollment needs to mirror, it'd be exactly the same as future, okay? Otherwise, your trends would just give you a wrong, not, wrong results. Did I make myself clear? You know, past, the, the best, basic tenet of that model is that past is what the future will bring. And with all the building going on, I really feel like that's not true. And I don't think that that's been clearly articulated to the community listening, listening or people that have received your notice that aren't here today. I also looked at other suburban, I, I'm busy enough as a parent and hard-working parent. And I took some time to look at the other suburban school districts that everyone seems to kind of ebb and flow similarly, you know? And they're all building, they're all expanding, they're all adding more teachers to reduce class sizes. And I feel like we're the only ones saying that we have a decline enrollment. So something doesn't add up to me. And I just, again, don't want to see us make a big mistake. I would rather see the agreement, which as I understand it, I had to look up what that term meant, but it's $325,000 purchase agreement, but minus all these in-kind services and rent. And the consideration basically means the payment. So that means there's no, it's a net, there's no transfer of money at that time, right?
Well, there's a transfer of money over the term of the lease purchase agreement.
Okay, over the term, but.
And then the two years beyond that with the in-kind.
Okay, so you're basically, you know, because it's renting and you got the in-kind services, then you're saying, okay, now you can have it.
Yes.
Okay. We still owe a lot of money on that school building. And back just a few years ago, we did put $4 million into it. I feel like, I know as a taxpayer, I'm a little bit hurt by that. And I, I also heard something today that was different from what I heard at the last meeting and a couple other, I do watch online, and I appreciate that you guys publish these meetings online. But I had heard when you were going through budget presentations, that Slingerlands and Elsmere were at capacity. And Elsmere, if it has any growth, it might lose its music room. And now you're implementing flex zones in these areas.
We're not implementing flex zones.
No, you're not? So what, when did that change?
It was just something that was discussed as an option for the future.
Okay.
Harmit Naran, one of Judy's neighbors.
Hi, Harmit.
Uh, please, can we, Judy, can you finish up and then he can speak? Please, one at a time.
I did, just, am I okay? Just two more minutes? But stand, stand right here, I'm, you can hold my hand. Okay. Well, I had read and I had seen that you had six classrooms left in all of your classrooms, in all your school, elementary schools. And I, I guess I don't think that that's a lot, considering you have 11 classrooms just six miles away. And I really want to just, I know one of the legal responsibilities of the school board and the open government laws, you know, or New York State laws, to responsibly manage district assets. So, yeah, I wanted to mention, I know you talked about how much money it's going to cost to maintain it. And before you mentioned how much, $800,000 to operate it as a school building again. But, you know, I also know we have $2 million, I anticipate $2 million extra in this year's budget. Over the last two previous budget cycles, we had $5 million extra. And before that, we had like a million dollars extra. So that all seems like a little bit of chump change compared to what we're putting in our capital reserve funds. And I feel like there is enough money that, in the budget, to improve and certainly in your capital reserve fund, to make these improvements if they are necessary to make that building a school again that sits on 12 and a half acres. And, yeah, we did build a school that wasn't needed. I would certainly, certainly ask that, you know, I do, oh, I do know that Slingerlands and Eagle can't even assemble. You know, I think assembly, one of the points, I think some of our, our elementary schools are too big now. One of the points of an assembly is where you bring all your students together and be a group together. You know, feel the whole power of the school. And Elsmere, I know, not Elsmere, I know, I do know for a fact that Slingerlands and Eagle haven't been able to do that for a long time. They split because they're built, they're mega schools. And I thought that would be, and I, you guys think about, you know, let's, how we can maybe use that building. But, you know, what if, you know, you're going to just use all your buildings differently? You know, all your buildings, you can include language arts in your buildings, elementary school, math labs. Rent a little space out for preschool, you know, put out an RFP, you know? There's a lot of things you could do with all of your buildings that would kind of preserve this ability to manage your assets and more, provide more flexibility in saying, instead of saying it's black and white, you know, there's a lot of creativity that you guys could impart in this decision. And I really would rather see there's some kind of ability at the end of the lease period for the, just to reevaluate the situation. You know, instead of just saying, okay, now it's yours. I think that's really short-sighted, and I'm afraid that it's going to be a waste of taxpayer dollars when you have to put an addition on Glenmont, like you say, you know? I don't think that's fair. And if that's what you guys plan on doing, then I'll accept a 5/12 reduction in my taxes. Because now, you know, my, when I, you know, the town of New Scotland folks don't have their own community without an elementary school. So, you know, 5/12 might be a good reduction in our, in our school taxes.
Hey, Judy, can you finish up? Because there might be other people that want to speak too, and I just want to allow them.
I've heard those words before, Lynn. I am a taxpayer, this is a public meeting, and I can't get this, and I am done. But I did want to make sure that you guys think about putting some kind of circuit breaker in this agreement instead of being hell-bent and getting rid of the school. Thank you.
Harmit Naran, I live in Clarksville as well. I said a couple of questions for the board. Can, can somebody please just take an action to kind of quantify how we will deal with increased enrollment if it happens? Like, is that something that somebody has? If our enrollment goes up by 100, we can accommodate it in our existing buildings. So if it goes up by 200, we can, we can accommodate some of it in existing buildings, and we would need to add on to Glenmont. Like, do you, if you guys don't have it as a plan, could somebody do that before we divest ourselves of a building that's already paid for? I'm looking for someone to nod their head. Can you guys do that? Well, and, and I apologize, I'm not, I'm not taking pot shots. It's just a, a question to ensure that if the enrollment goes up by 201, and we can accommodate 100 in our existing buildings, does accommodating 201 now mean we're going to spend a million dollars on Glenmont when we just sold a building that could have accommodated those 100 for chump change, right? I mean, that, I guess that's the situation we're all trying to avoid as taxpayers and school district members, right? Can, can someone take that as an action? Yes?
Yes, we have that information. I don't have that.
Okay, I mean, can you, can you guys share it with all of us that we all see it as well?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that would be great. I guess the other question I had is, and Joanne, kind of to your point, we have a buyer available, but I guess the thing that I can't get over is that money doesn't actually benefit us in any way, right? It comes off the state ed number, and the budget for BCSD stays exactly the same, right?
Net position is the same.
Okay, so, so the only cost of maintaining the school is $31,000 a year, right? Whether the sheriffs buy it for $300,000 or $100,000, or they buy it this year, or they buy it in 10 years, we're talking about 30 grand a year, which, let's be honest, is what we spend in lawnmower gas, right?
And if I can just clarify on that, it's $31,000 a year for maintenance. If there is any vandalism that occurs with the building, that would be extra. And if there's any deterioration in the building envelope, that's a capital project that could be significant. As we had noted at one of the earlier sessions, we could have about $2.1 million of capital work that would be required in the future to preserve the building in its current condition.
If you, if you decide not to use it, if you just keep it mothballed?
Yeah, I mean, at some point, the roof, the mortar on the outside, the bricks would need to be repaired in order to preserve the building.
Okay, and I guess kind of on that same point, the third question, since we spent $4 million on the building, how did those $4 million of improvements turn into a $400,000 asset? Can somebody just kind of help us walk through that? If I, if I build an addition on my house for $100,000, the value of my house goes up, not by $100,000, but by $80,000 or $70,000. So we spent $4 million, where did it go?
Well, has to, I mean, there has to be somebody who wants to buy it. And you can go down into, on your way to Voorheesville, and there's, there's an empty building on the right-hand side. It just, it depends if there's a buyer. But I, I don't know if that's the right value, but that's what two appraisers came in at. And we only have, the other example was Adams Street, which we had valued at, I don't remember, what was it, 800? I wasn't here at the time.
Originally, it was like 600,000.
And they sold it for much less. And they sold it for much less. So, if you have a buyer who's going to pay it, sometimes that's the value, and sometimes if there's a higher demand for it, you get a higher value. But it's not, I don't think it's the same as buying residential, if that's what I would do.
No, it's not. And again, if I can comment on that, the, when you are making your improvements to a building, the $4 million of work that was done on Clarksville was at the time when we expected that we would continue to be able to operate it as an elementary school.
I'm not, I'm not arguing the investment, I'm just wondering, we spent $4 million on something that had a value of $4 million.
Yes. And so, again, it's a unique property. An elementary school is not something that is widely used or usable by a number of other parties. So, I think that lower market value is a reflection of the limited alternate uses for the building.
Okay, but, but we also just said that the historical designation was really no issue, so the alternate uses are essentially infinite?
Alternate uses meaning what another buyer of the building would be able to use the building for.
Okay. And there's one last question about the finances. The, the rent money that we're getting right now, does that come off of our state ed grant?
No. The money is only adjusted off of the building aid if the building is sold.
Okay, so...
So, currently, the building aid has not been adjusted.
Adjusted, okay. So, so we would actually lose out when we stop getting rent money and sell the building?
We...
Because the sale price comes off state ed, but the income we're getting from rent stops, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's a wash, essentially.
Oh, no, it's not like a loss.
Or the, the, the rent that comes to us as a purchase price for the building would be adjusted off the building aid.
Okay.
I just wanted to respond, I don't have the numbers on the capacity, Ms. Monroe's going to get that, but I can just give you my example, when my son graduated at Glenmont, there were 475 kids there, we were at capacity. There are now 320. The classes have dropped significantly.
Yeah, I completely understand.
So, there was 100, and just in Glenmont alone, there was 155 extra kids at the top of the peak.
Right, and we, and we shoehorned those kids in by doing 30 kids in a class, art on a cart, all kinds of, let's be honest, extremely...
There wasn't art on the cart at Glenmont, we had our own art room.
Okay, but, the point is...
But it was a lot, I'm just saying it's a lot.
We made a lot of decisions we weren't happy with, right?
Yes, no, I was not happy.
To shoehorn that many kids into the classrooms, right? You would not do that if you had space available.
No, no.
But at the time, when we were considered to be having, quote, rapidly increasing enrollment, it really wasn't much more than 100 students a year in those years. It wasn't a case in some places.
I think it's a good question.
Can I ask a question just to clarify about the rent money? Right now, the rent money, it, it does not affect our state aid if it's a purchases, but when he leaves, we will have no rent money. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that if we, if he doesn't get the agreement he wants, he's leaving.
I would be happy to rent the building. I would recommend that we rent the building for as many years as we had a willing tenant. At issue is that does not meet the operating needs of the sheriff's department, and that's why we've been having these conversations, is to see if we could come to a mutually beneficial agreement.
There is no rent money unless there's a renter there, and the current renter is either interested in this, or he's leaving. Just to clarify that.
Right, so the, I guess the net for me is, we sell it, we gain nothing, and it costs us 30 grand a year to maintain it.
Plus capital costs.
Plus eventual capital costs, yes. Or we don't sell it and it costs us 30 grand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Bull. I'm a parent and a small business owner in the district and a taxpayer. I would just, you pretty much made all my points. Fiscally, this seems totally ridiculous to me to sell this property for this amount of money and this amount of gain slash loss. I know you've just made the comment that we won't have any, any rent money coming in if we don't have a renter, which is absolutely true. But at this point, we will have no rent money coming in, in the next three years of lease, because it's going to be taken off our state aid. So, keeping the building empty means nothing either way, that direction. It seems ridiculous to me that we would take a piece of real estate with 12 acres and sell it for this amount of money when real estate is finite. There is going to be less and less real estate in the future, there's going to be less and less real estate available for the school district to use. Even assuming that we let the building fall into ruins and eventually bulldoze it and build another building on it in 50 years, it still is probably better saving it for $31,000 a year than selling it for this kind of price, in my estimation. I think the fact that we have put $4 million in it and used that building for two years will still be paying that $4 million off for the next five years to the tune of, what was that number, Ms. Keel?
Yeah, just under 2 million.
So, how much a year?
I'll bring up the chart for you.
So, we'll be paying roughly $150,000 a year on the, the money we put into this building, and we're worried about paying $30,000 a year to keep it at its status quo without a renter in it. It just seems fiscally irresponsible. This, this school district is going to need more space at some point. I don't care if you say it's not going to be in the next five years, it's not going to be in the next 10 years. We saw a downturn in the 70s that didn't turn into an upturn again into the 90s. Okay, let's say it takes 20 years to get another upturn. We are 10 years towards that 20-year point already, because the downturn happened five years ago. That was our peak point, okay? It just boggles my mind when I look at these numbers. I understand we want to be good neighbors, I understand the sheriff's department is a benefit to having in Clarksville, and we like having them out there. But it seems to me like the school district is bending over backwards to be a good neighbor and taking everything at a loss, a fiscal loss, that the taxpayer is going to shoulder for the next indefinite amount of time. And it, it, as a person who has to run a small business, I cannot believe we are willing to, to, to throw away these assets for small benefits of saving $30,000. Thank you.
I live in Elsmere. I went to Clarksville School a long time ago, K through 4, and then I went to Elsmere School, and what was then the junior high school, and then the high school, senior high school at that time. We have a $97 million annual budget, I believe, which was just approved in May, I guess, and we had a few years ago, a $20 million bond issue and another bond issue for, I don't know, $2 million, which I think was defeated for an artificial turf field. And it seems like those costs, compared to the costs we're talking about here for Clarksville School, it's just night and day. And I, I know a developer in the town here, back in 2011, he was paying $50,000 for an acre of land because he could make houses for $350,000, sell them, make big money, whatever. Now, if you've got 12 acres in Clarksville there, 12 times 50,000 would be $600,000. The, I'm sure the sheriff's office would love to buy the property at a bargain basement price, because that's what it is. And I don't know where else the sheriff's office can go out there. I don't see an awful lot out there in the hill towns where the sheriff's office would have as much space or as good a deal. And so, I'm sure the sheriff's office would love to buy the property at a bargain basement price. I, years ago, I used to do enrollment projections for the state education department, and they were inaccurate at best. The farther out you went, the less accurate they were. And that was because you don't know all the variables, you don't know the values of all the variables, and the values of the variables can change quickly. So, what we were doing with enrollment projections for all the upstate school districts, it was pretty much just guesswork. And, you know, the farther out you go, it's an even bigger guess. If you look at population and enrollment trends in the school district, you go back 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years, here and there, you may get a downturn like we had in the mid 70s, and eventually, it turns around, because the developers are still developing, and they're, they're going to develop every square foot of land in the, in the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland that they possibly can. That's what developers do. And I don't know where all the people come from, but they come and they move in and they live in the school district, the town of Bethlehem, the town of New Scotland, wherever. And over time, the population and enrollment trends keep going up. The number of programs that we add increases, more and more programs. I know when I graduated, we didn't have a lot of the programs these, these students have now. Nothing, a lot of it, I mean, we couldn't even have dreamed of some of the programs they have now. They have all kinds of programs we never had. The programs change, the program needs change, and the number of programs increases over time, just like the population and enrollment. When the Delmar School was closed, it was done to save money, which was, was a nice thought at the time, but then, in a few years, things turned around and we had to increase the size of every elementary school in the district, I believe. Some more than once. Plus, we added another elementary school, the Eagle Elementary School. So, when we needed the Delmar School, we didn't have it. We had to spend millions of dollars to enlarge all the other elementary schools, and millions of dollars to build the Eagle School. So, selling the Delmar School came back to bite us, big time. Now, if, if you have to do that again because of increased enrollment, I mean, you're going to, you're going to spend millions of dollars to enlarge the elementary schools again, which we've already done. And it, it just makes no sense to me. I think that you can make more money renting the Clarksville School out than you can selling it. Once you sell it, that's it. You not only don't have the space, but you don't have the revenue from renting it out. I would rent it out as long as I could. And, you know, I don't know where else the sheriff's office is going to go out there, but I'm sure they'd love to buy it at a bargain basement price, who wouldn't? I mean, if, if I were in their shoes, I'd want that too. But I, I think if the school district thinks they may need the space in the future, then just keep renting out the school. And if the sheriff's office at some point says, I don't want to rent it anymore, well, then the sheriff's office has to go someplace else and you try to find another tenant. But I know eventually, the enrollment will pick up again, and then the space will probably be needed. I don't know how long it'll take, but we closed the Clarksville School six years ago, and I, I don't think it'll take 20 years for things to turn it around, for things to turn around on enrollment and, and population and all that. I mean, the number of people in the school district will keep going up. People want to go to Bethlehem because it's highly rated, and they want their kids in the best school system that they can get their kids in. That I understand. I, I don't have kids, but if I did, I'd, I'd want my kids in a great school system too. So, I think it's best to hang on to the school, rent it out as long as you can, if you need it for increased enrollment, or new programs, or whatever, then you have it. Once you sell it, you don't have the space if you need it. And I, I don't think the cost involved to hang on to it is that great compared to, you know, what we're talking about with $97 million a year for the budget and, and buying buses for, you know, 1.7 million a year, or whatever it is. I've, I've seen more bond issues for bu, for buses. It seems like almost every year, you're buying buses for millions of dollars, and most of the buses I see go by me on my street, they're either empty or close to empty. So, I don't understand that, but the cost of the buses is millions of dollars, and that's, that's not what we're talking about here, really, per year. So, I would just keep in mind that whatever enrollment projections you have, the state paid me to do enrollment projections, and it's just a lot of guesswork. At the time, we used a rather mechanical algorithm to do enrollment projections, and for some districts, it might be all right, but if you have a growing, a growing community like Bethlehem, then I wouldn't put much stock in the enrollment projections. It's just a lot of guesswork. And I, beyond five years, who knows? I, I wouldn't, the far, it's like the weather, you know? Beyond 10 days out, they're just guessing. They don't really know. And that's the way the enrollment projections are. So, I think the best thing the district can do is just hang on to the property as long as you can, rent it out as long as you can, and then you, at least you have the revenue. The revenue from the, the building, the rental of it will go up over time, and if the day comes when you need the space for more students, or expanded programs, or whatever it is, then you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Bob Marriott. I've lived in Delmar my whole life. I'm going to be 64 next month, so I kind of have seen things happen in town. I went to Delmar Elementary School. Mrs. Palmer, Mrs. Gunther, Mrs. Hosey, Mrs. McNitt, probably I'm the only one that remembers those names. I came up here, sat in class, watched this addition get built, watched that addition get built. Delmar Elementary School got closed because we don't need it. I think it was sold to the town for a dollar, I could be wrong, but...
No, it was...
Guess what? We needed it. Another mistake that probably most people don't know about. By Marlborough Road, there was a bunch of land that was going to be saved to build a school on. Well, we don't need that, so everybody on Marlborough Road has a nice deep lot, and we don't have a school in the middle of town. I used to have some involvement with the Clarksville Historical Society. For several years, they put on what they called a Plum Fest in the little hamlets in the town of New Scotland. And it was called the Plum Fest because New Scotland is plum smack dab in the middle of Albany County. It's a great place for the sheriff's office to be. Now, I doubt, since their lease ends on July 31st, they're going to run out of the building on August 1st, but if they run out, where are they going to go to that's smack dab in the middle of the town of New Scotland? I don't know. You mentioned the budget. The budget's close to a billion dollars. $31,000 a year... Thirty-one thousand dollars a year to keep that building from collapsing is miniscule. The three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we're not really going to get compared to a billion dollars is miniscule. Ms. Cunningham mentioned there's land in Glenmont that might be built up, so more students might show up there, so we might have to add on to Glenmont. Well, if Clarksville stays property of the Bethlehem School District, those students can go to the Glenmont School, we can redistrict, we can push kids towards New Scotland, towards Clarksville, and let the people that live in Clarksville go to school in Clarksville. We're talking about an hour bus rides for kindergarteners that are going to be reduced to forty-five minutes. You can get to Saratoga in less than an hour. You can go to Kingston. Why can't we get kids to go to school six minutes away, ten minutes away, fifteen minutes away, instead of taking them as far as Saratoga to go to school? Now, this isn't part of what's going on here. Seven years ago, I volunteered to build a boardwalk up in Thatcher Park. I ended up with Lyme disease. So I have trouble keeping my brain focused. So if I get wandering around too much, I'll apologize ahead of time. Bethlehem School District owns the Bethlehem Library. Across the street from there, they've been sold two different ways, condominiums, townhouses. They're basically a fancy, expensive duplex. The people that bought them spent more for half of a building than you want to sell the Clarksville Elementary School for. Now, if all these places get built in Glenmont and we got to reopen Clarksville and we have to renovate it, we're going to know about that ahead of time. So we can do the renovations when it's empty, not when there's students in there. It costs a lot less to renovate a building that's empty. An elementary school doesn't require quite as fancy a technology as a high school. And technology is advancing, and so much technology now is wireless. So we don't have to run wires and everything all over the place. We just have to put something in to receive a signal that's transmitted someplace. So the renovations aren't going to cost as much as they have in the past, like when I sat here in biology class and they're trying to work while I'm sitting there and they're running all these cables around. And since I was here, graduated in seventy-one, there's a lot more cables been run because that's, all this new technology got developed. We're wondering, what could we possibly ever sell the Clarksville School for if we don't let the Sheriff's Office buy it? There's a lot of schools, there's one I've gone by, I think it's on Route one forty-six in Gilderlin, that were renovated into senior housing, which is a big thing, assisted living is a big thing nowadays. Low-income housing, it can be converted into that. Medical offices, we got satellite medical offices all over everywhere. So that's something else that can be done with it. And guess what? What do we do with the Delmar Elementary School? We sold it to the town to make a town hall. Well, maybe the town of New Scotland would like to buy it someday because they've had to add on to their town hall. They might want to buy it to be a town hall. It's not like nobody's going to want it. You've just got to think about what's going to happen. You're talking about the ancient old library, the library that I had to use in elementary school. You got more money for that, not what you wanted, but you got more money for that than you're thinking about getting up in Clarksville. Building besides Glenmont is and will take place out in town of New Scotland, around Clarksville. Young people like to have a five, some young people like to have a five-acre lot, have some chickens, maybe a horse, let their kids ride around in an ATV, have a lot of trees, cut trees down for firewood and stuff. They're not going to get a five-acre lot anywhere as close around here, but they can out there. People with lots and lots of money will build a half-million-dollar house out in the country with a stream and woods all around it, so nobody knows where they live. And they might have a couple of kids that got to go to school. They can go close by to Clarksville. I think the Sheriff's not going to walk away if you don't give him what he wants right now. You can come up with a new lease, let him do more renovations, that he doesn't have to put the thing back exactly the way it was. Let him stay there another five years, reevaluate this. Because if he leaves there, he's not going to get somewhere else to go for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and he's not going to get to go there August first, unless he knows something, knows something that I don't know. And rather than meander around and lose people, I'll sit down, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. I think this is an opportune moment to just take a five-minute break. Our participation in government, students can come up here, sign in. If you need a board member to sign your sheet, you know, ask someone around the table to do so. But there are a couple sheets on the table. Who would like to speak? Well, let me see, let me make sure that everyone who had wanted to speak has a chance first. Okay, one minute.
Yeah, I'm Bob Marriott. In some ways, this is unrelated, but I think it's very related. Out in front of the school, on Delaware Avenue, there's a sign where you put up SATs are such and such a date, graduation such and such a date, and it's supposed to be lighted. I have reason to come down from out in the country, from Clarksville area, in the evening and go by that sign, and every once in a while, the light flickers on briefly. It's been that way over a year. Now, am I the only one who ever notices that? Nobody on the board ever drives by and notices that the lighted sign isn't lighted? People need to open their eyes, which is what is related. People need to open their eyes about the whole idea with Clarksville School, the minuscule amounts you're going to get if you sell it, the little tiny bit it's going to cost to keep it, and the many, many potential uses there may be for it in the future, especially for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing out about the sign. We'll check into that. All right, the next part of the agenda is actually what we've more or less did, a recognition of visitors who have something to say on tonight's agenda. If there's something else besides this that anybody wanted to make a comment on, that would be the time. It has to be on the agenda. It's an agenda.
Donald Hensdale. I just have one question. When the additions were put on all the elementary schools in nineteen nineties or whenever it was, does anyone know how many million dollars all that cost?
I should remember because I was here, but I don't remember the exact, I have to look that up.
Okay, but it was several million dollars.
It was, because we added on to three schools, Slingerlin's, Hammergrail, and Glenmont.
And then the Eagle Elementary School costs, was it twelve million?
I think it was less, it was less than that.
I think that's about right. I think that was right, twelve million. How much Eagle was?
How much?
Twelve million? Sounds about right.
Eleven million?
Yeah.
It's up close.
Okay, thank you.
You know what I would ask is, there've been a lot of statements made about data, and in the next time we have this discussion, I would like Ms. Monroe to tell us about enrollment trends across the districts and what the enrollment projection models are based on. I was assuming they were based on live birth data, but I want more information. So, you know, we heard some questions, we heard some people make some statements, and so I would like you to tell us if there's actually increasing enrollments across the districts or declining, et cetera. So for the next time as a presentation, could you please get that data for us? Thank you.
It might be also interesting to get the information, if we can, from the Little Leagues that are, or soccer leagues now, and see what their numbers are. Are they going up? Are they going down? It's all imperfect, but if you have enough data, you can make some assumptions from it. Right now, we have, I think we have limited data. It's what we have right now to work with, but I'd like to have as much as possible. Charmaine is asking for some information, and I think it's right on point. And I think that in the past, when we made a decision that, our data was very different than what we now discover the Little League's data was. They showed a different trend.
So you're looking for additional indicators of growth or decline?
Yes, absolutely.
The baseball season is the same time as the lacrosse season. Over the past eight years, the Bethlehem Lacrosse League has grown exponentially. So the Little League numbers, I'm sure, are affected by, so my only point is, it's a very, a very soft proxy.
It's got to be a valid indicator.
Right, but then look at, look at all of that combined. You know, are the sports programs growing? Are they declining? It's one thing, it's one thing if, okay, lacrosse is getting big. At one point, soccer was nonexistent, then soccer exploded.
Yeah, but that's, I don't think that's an indicator of growth. It's an indicator of interest in a sport.
Right, but if you add it all together, you'll have an indicator as to where the number of kids you have playing sports, it may or may not be worth something, but it might be interesting to see how those trends, trend lines go.
Or preschool enrollment. Think of an indicator that is, that measures what you're...
You have no indication, how many kids play multiple sport? You have...
Yeah, you have no...
There's no way to quantify these numbers.
I think that's more of an indicator of the overscheduling.
But it sounds like indicator, additional indicators beyond what's in the report that can be seen to measure growth or decline.
Is there a way to get real estate numbers? Because I know somebody who's looking for a house in the area, and the Realtor said to this individual, it's definitely a seller's market, and things are flying off rather quickly to see maybe a trend in sales in real estate in our area. Is it on an uptick in how so compared to the past years? And that was just a thought. We're talking about indicators. So I thought that would be, you know, something to look at.
I would also like to know, because the report that does have the housing, you know, planned housing, that also is a fluid data point. Yeah, I would just like to know from the town, you know, those things change quite a lot, and there are, you know, certain, I mean, the initial report was updated in March, and, you know, half the things kind of went away. I also think, you know, what you focus on expands, and you think, oh, there's development going on everywhere in town. Well, is there development going on everywhere in town? What kind of development? How many units? Is it single-family? Is it, you know, apartment? You know, the gables right near, and I appreciate the analogy about the expensive duplexes that are being sold, but, you know, there's certain types of housing that are attracting people with children versus not. So I just would like to have more updated...
And that's what the town, when we met with them earlier in the year after we got the planning commission's report, they were helpful in providing that information, is what's the market of the homes that are being built, so we can get updated information from them.
It would be helpful to know how many, the real estate market in terms of people moving in and selling, but also people moving, selling and moving out. So it's not just the one way of how many people are coming in, it's how many people are also leaving, because it's a two...
Well, unless they're buying new.
I'm sorry?
Unless they're buying new, it would be relatively the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, I think some people are selling and moving in, and some people are selling and moving out, so...
You mean, selling and moving to a different house?
Buying, buying, moving in, selling.
Yeah, and that, wasn't that in?
That was in there.
That was in there.
And what we also don't know is how many of the people who are buying other properties, how many of their kids are leaving the area and not coming back?
Well, and that's the other thing is, I mean, if you look at the demographic trends for upstate New York, including the capital district, it's shrinking. You know, we're losing members of Congress because we're losing population. Downstate is growing, upstate is shrinking. The net is significant because we're, you know, we're actually losing representation in bodies that, you know, we derive, are derived from the population.
That's an indicator. How many people seats in legislature do we have? And if they increase or decrease based on...
Yeah, and when the census is redrawn every year, we lose another, or two, members of Congress in New York State. We used to have thirty-three, now we're down to twenty-nine, and...
I think it was originally forty-three.
Yeah, and originally, it was, you know, even in my tenure, it's been, you know, thirty-five, thirty-eight, and beyond. So, I mean, New York is, upstate New York in particular, is losing population. I also just want to say, I really appreciated hearing the comments from the folks that spoke. I thought you raised really great points, and I just want to thank you for taking the time, and you, some of you really offered some creative things to think about. So I just, I think we all feel like that, but thank you.
I'll also thank you, too, because, you know, first of all, it takes guts to get up and speak, but also, you know, you wonder whether you're being heard. And, I mean, this board is exceptional in that nature, but they do listen, so Jody wrote, took copious notes, and, you know, will be kind of giving us updated information for our next meeting.
One more thing, I'm not sure if it's fair to ask, I think to clarify with the Sheriff what his intentions are. I mean, seriously, because it's like, if you don't extend the lease, is he leaving on August first? Don't think so. But, I mean, people, a number of people have asked that, and I'm not sure if it's fair...
He left, he's gone.
So, but somehow, you know, are they willing to extend? For how long? Is he actively, I mean, I'm not sure how much he's going to tell you, but it would be helpful to know, since people have said, "What's he going to do if you don't sell it to him right now?"
And I wanted to say thank you to the people who got up and spoke, because you spent a lot of time putting thought into that, and I recognize that. You didn't just come here and whip off something off the top of your head. Judy, you had a lot to say. It was great, though. You spent a lot of time, and it was very thoughtful, and both the gentlemen here in the front and in the back. I think, I think it was great, and I appreciated listening to everything that you presented. And you brought up some things to think about.
Okay, moving along. Number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following finance action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Any discussion?
I've got a, is this the place, there's, I had a question about something. Hang on a second. Credit card, this is the credit card thing, right. The office of, is that seven, is that item seven?
Correct.
Right. And I know that there was a concern raised about third-party access to accounts, and there was a response from the district about that. Could you clarify that? Just the concern and the, because I was concerned when I read that. And hearing the Comptroller's response and their concern, I think we may have discussed this before, but I was concerned.
We did, yeah.
I know, I want to hear it again, because I think I'm concerned.
Their concern was that the payment of the credit card bill is accomplished by a debit into the district's bank account. We reviewed the various controls that we have in place to make sure that that was appropriate. We talked about all of the reviews, and at the end of the day, they still felt that it shouldn't be paid via an automatic draw from the account. We didn't put this in the report, but that I found to be a little bit ironic, because when we were talking with them, we were trying to make the case that we're in the 21st century now, and the way transactions are processed has been updated. Our payments to the state comptroller's office for our withholdings from members of the system comes out of our accounts on an ACH debit. So it is a common way of funding your transactions. We have a multitude of controls, of reviews. Every single credit card purchase has a separate purchase order in advance. The bills and all of the receipts are reviewed by both the superintendent and myself. They are reviewed by the claims auditor. We did, in response to the audit, push our payment time from, you know, within two days of the bills being generated to fifteen days, so that we can have that review accomplished. And one of the... And one of the things that we noted in the response, and OSE agreed to this, our external auditors have noted this, and the internal auditors, with the seven-plus years that we've been using, the credit cards as a payment only on those items where we can't purchase what we need with a purchase order, there have been no instances of improper purchases. So, again, these are typically lower-dollar items. We have blocks on these cards for both the types of merchants that you can purchase from. There's daily transaction limits, both in terms of numbers and dollars, so we have built this program so that it has a high level of internal control. So that was why we took the position to disagree with their recommendation relative to that piece of it.
And just being on the audit committee, the thing that I was concerned about was reviewing some of them after they pulled the money out, but in your response, you indicated the district was going to change that practice and make sure that they were reviewing them before it pulled the money from the account. And that's normal practice for most businesses.
But it's third-party access to the account. For me, it's not so much, it's third-party access to the account.
But the alternative would be for us to process a check that we then mail to the bank to pay off our credit card bill. So, you know, the bank that is holding our deposit account is the one that also is the issuer of the credit card, so that would be a step backwards in terms of efficiencies to have to do that.
It's like having your mortgage payment withdrawn every month, or setting up direct bill. I mean, that's definitely...
And the fact that OSE doesn't mind taking the money from the account, and that seems okay for them to do.
Well, as are all of our payroll withholdings, whether it's TRS, ERS, federal, FICA, state withholding taxes, there's a list of items that come out automatically.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, professional, number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 18. Some move.
Second.
I think we got it first, or the second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following support action items, one through 12, with the exception of the appointment of Rebecca Holigan. Some move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, other items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, items one through three. Some move.
Second.
Wait a minute, it should be items one through four. Says one through three, but should be items one through four. Some move. Okay, any questions at all? I know this was the first reading on these policies.
Is there a way to indicate, like, using track changes if a policy has changed? Because I read the whole thing, but I'm not sure if there were significant changes or not. I mean, it would be helpful to know in the text of the policy how much has it had changed, just a recommendation in the future. For example, like, to have, were there just minor cosmetic changes or were there substantive content changes? It would be helpful to indicate if a policy was changed. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Can I also ask a question? When you read the timeout policy, the timeout rooms, it just seems like that is such a, like, 25-years-ago description of what these are. Is that something that is kind of a state ed definition?
Legal requirements, like, our attorney reviewed that policy twice in the last year to make sure we were in compliance with it, so there are certain requirements, language that you have to have in place.
And they're called timeout rooms?
It's a standard.
Right.
It's just so diminishing and, you know, implies so much that is just negative.
It's outdated.
Yeah, it's so outdated.
Well, I'm not even sure we even use them. I mean, we wouldn't use them.
We definitely use them.
Yeah, you can tour them. I mean, you can, you tour Elsmere has one.
Yeah, the intensive classroom. I saw them use the timeout room. It's when they can't, the students can't get a hold of how they feel or their behavior, and usually their one-on-one aide will determine whether or not they need to use the timeout room, but they're definitely warranted and needed, I mean, based on what I observed last year at Elsmere in the intensive skills classroom.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning the...
Kathy said sometimes even the students will just go in there if they're feeling overwhelmed. It's a space where they can feel safe, and they can kind of decompress.
I heard Joanne just say, can we update the language?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sure they're needed and necessary. My, my reaction was just, are we really calling these things timeout rooms? I mean, they seem like they're, it's such a dated concept that imply, is laden with a negative...
Should be the serenity room.
Yeah, it should just be something that is like, you know...
I mean, I could check with our attorneys to see if there is any, you know, variation.
I'm surprised parents haven't raised that. Like, really? You're sending my kid to a timeout? Yeah, totally.
I mean, my wife was in the field for 30 years, and I've never heard her refer to it anything other than a timeout room.
No, no, I'm sure that, you know, it's just, we have a policy that identifies it as this timeout room, which implies a...
It's like remedial English. We don't call it that.
Right.
Well, Beth is coming tomorrow to do a presentation for some staff, so I can ask her that.
Yeah, if you would just ask her, it just sounds so 30 years...
I have a question about the equal opportunity and nondiscrimination policy. I noticed in the list of protected categories, gender identity was not listed, so I was wondering if that was also a legal requirement, or if we could adopt the language that appears in the Code of Conduct because of DASSA. It wasn't a complete listing of the categories that we hold...
It said such as, right.
Yeah, so, we hold stu, like, if you look at the Code of Conduct under DASSA, there are additional categories that don't appear in a nondiscrimination policy. So that would be something to ask Beth, is if we could say gender identity, are there additional categories that we shouldn't...
I don't think it was intended to be an exhaustive list.
No, I thought it was tended to be examples.
Okay. I would suggest putting gender identity in there.
Yeah, why wouldn't we just add it?
Yeah. But still, use the word included, but not where you wrote it.
Not limited to.
Not limited to, yeah.
Right, it just seems like this day and age, you would want to make that clear.
We couldn't add it, I don't see any issue.
Yeah, we could just pick up the language from the Code of Conduct.
Right. So, can we add that, and then for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 12, recognition of visitors for non-agenda, non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the board about a non-agenda item?
Oh, I was wondering why you stayed around. I thought they were just fascinated by the discussion.
Thank you for waiting.
Hi, my name's Ryan Fisk. This is John Maloney and Brendan Carrick. We are the varsity captains for the boys swim and dive team. We want to, first of all, as a thank you to the board for your support, we want to write a letter to all of you. We made copies for everyone, however, I know Mr. Downey's not here, so I will be reading off of his copy, and then my co-captains will be passing out the copies to the rest of you. So, let them do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy was also casting up the game tennis.
We were all wondering why you guys stuck around.
I thought, I was fascinated, wondering what happens in Clarksville.
All right.
Good job.
To the members of the Bethlehem Board of Education, on behalf of the entire boys swimming and diving team, we would like to thank you for your tremendous support of our program. First, we would like to thank you for the new blocks that we have needed for the last few years. The continuing renovation and improvement of the pool area has only furthered the motivation to bring a sectional championship title back to Bethlehem. As we're sure many of you are aware, Bethlehem has a long tradition of excellence in swimming, including over 30 consecutive sectional titles, and we look forward to the opportunity to reclaim our spot as number one. Secondly, we would like to thank you for your support of the 10-year pool improvement plan. This plan not only helps the current members of the team, but also will serve as motivation for the future of the B.C. swim and dive program to continue to swim at a level that represents the school and the quality of our pool area. Finally, we would like to thank you for allowing us to go to invitational meets such as the Shen Invitational. We all appreciate the opportunity to swim against high-level competition in the pools where our biggest meets, such as sectionals and states, are held. Swimming against the athletes we will see at states and at sectionals only furthers the drive to work hard, so that when those meets come around, we can be at our absolute best. Thank you again for helping us to restore the B.C. dynasty.
Thank you.[1592.12][1592.12](applause)
And thank you for, for holding on so long to thank us. Going a sportsmanship light.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I just ask a question and thank you? That was terrific. It's always nice to be thanked. And I kind of was waiting till the end to see if there was a and, you can do X, Y, or Z, but just wondered, are you guys all seniors?
No.
So is there anything from a competitive swim standpoint that would be on your wish list for specific improvements to the, to the facility, the pool, or to the program?
Not that we could think of right now, but we have a lot, so thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It was interesting, very interesting.
Thank you.[1644.12][1644.12](applause) Okay, future meetings and events. June 21st is our next board meeting with anticipated executive session at 6:00 p.m. and the regular meeting starting at 7:00. On Thursday, June 22nd, at 8:45 in the morning, will be the eighth grade Moving Up Ceremony. And on Friday, June 23rd, at 6:30 at the Cefq Arena, will be the class of 2017's graduation.
You know, there's the board dinner too. I don't know if we have to say that, because we'll all be together.
We're not, we're not taking action.
I know, I know. But still, we're not going to talk about... Secondly, speaking.
No, we don't, that's fine. I don't think there's any need for us to go into executive session right now, so may I have a motion to adjourn.
Wait, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
And if everyone thinks this is a bad idea, I'm fine with that, but would it make sense to have these Capitol District Planning Commission people come back before us, so we can actually ask questions about the report that we're basing so much, or some of us are, you know, using that as a data point? I'm just, I mean, I feel like I know a lot more now about questions to ask. I wish they were in front of us again, or we had that opportunity. If others don't feel like you need that, I'm, I'm fine, or if it's not possible, but I just wonder if that would be helpful to us in...
I have no objection.
I have no objection. If they can, you know, who knows whether they can come, but certainly if someone could come.
We could always list your questions, and we could always send them to them. If they couldn't be available, we could make that public, like your questions.
Right, but if they are available, I mean, this is such a big decision, and, you know, I mean, people are really focused on...
I can find out.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.[1775.12]